Okay, thanks everybody for coming out. It is 6:34 and we'll call our meeting to order. We'll begin with the vacation and the pledge. Father, I pray for this council tonight. We pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage to do what is right and good for all citizens. May we put the interests of others above our own. May we be good neighbors, recognizing your image in every person here. As they face life-threatening wind and water from Hurricane Beryl, we pray for the families in Jamaica, Cayman Islands, Haiti, and the Dominican Republic, tonight and through this weekend. We're grateful for the ability to celebrate the religious and personal freedoms afforded to citizens of the United States of America. These are hard-won, and only through your grace, in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That moves us to item three, public comments. Before we start, just want to remind everyone during public comments, obviously you can talk about whatever your topic is. Let's make sure it's respectful. And Janie, please let me know who is first up.
Okay. The only person that checked that they wanted to speak was Ms. Christie Smith.
Great.
Put me on a timer. I have a novel. So Happy Independence Day week, Christie Smith through 6630 Canyon. Lori, I just want to applaud your professionalism in handling these meetings. All I've heard all week is how awful and negative select council members are in the city of Simonton to those who view the city online page now. As a resident, I feel all these questions were all explained over and over again to you in the budget meetings where many of us sat and observed. I want to remind you of your elected positions as alderman and council, general acts in the legislative branch of city government, as well as a policymaking body. The council also looks to the city goals, major projects, and infrastructure improvements ranging from community growth to land use, finances, and strategic planning. You are not the money police. We have an accountant to do that. You mentioned you asked for this for here. The person that prepares this work, she works 11 hours a week. And many of you are the reason that two of our best people exited. To insinuate we have an uncontrolled bill of spending is absurd. Lori has prepared you a line-by-item income and expense sheet that I can comprehend looking at the city page. You need to act on your best intelligence to comprehend it and not to challenge it. Even through investigation, time and time again, the city has shown no wrongdoing of its finances. You waste a citizen's time trying to discredit the mayor as well as Janie and Julie. You are increasing a monthly bill of attorney fees having multiple meetings a month. Your paperwork should be looked at over an email and your questions as a board to Lori before coming to a meeting, tabling or challenging every item. You should not be sharing a consulting with anyone outside the elected council. One of my other concerns, that was just peace, was I know they mentioned in the road repair that Canyon needed road repair, but I've been driving around and Canyon got the funds from the FEMA $12,000 grant that we got for each road, and it's on there for the repair. Well, I mean Buckboard and Bronco Section 1 are way worse than Canyon. I don't think Canyon needs a repair, in my professional opinion, but maybe y'all could take another look at that. And then some of the other concerns I would like to see the council focus on is enforcing the ordinance, non-working vehicles, the fence behind Pony coming down all the time and the animals coming across. And then I was mentioned to a resident of Simonton that every day, she literally walks and sees that almost every equestrian trailer pulling in or out of the equestrian center is almost hit because of the speed. And there's going to be a tragic accident there of the trailers because it is like bumper to bumper where they're trying to turn in or pull out and people already going 70 miles an hour. She's like, there's going to be horses injured and it's going to be sad. So maybe we can look into that. So.
That's it? You're talking about Twinwood.
Twinwood's a equestrian.
Oh, Jeremar, okay.
Jeremar.
Janie?
Yes, ma'am.
Kristin was the only one signed up?
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. That's all, that was the only individual that said that they wanted to speak.
All right, before we move on, did anybody else want to speak and forgot to sign in? Okay, great. Thank you. Item four, new business. Consider and take action on the draft city council meeting minutes of June 4th, 2024. Those minutes were tabled at our last meeting. We have reviewed the minutes, the video, and the audio. And there is one correction, or addition, I would say, that Janie added. It's in green in your copy. And it was questions about the 501(c) status and if the medically associated options can be exercised. There were other questions related to the public hearing postings and the amount of bonds being issued. And that was the previous postings that had already been handled prior to that meeting specifically. Just explanation about that. There's a question as to why the documents contain language communicating the city council that already made the decision before the city council meeting. There was no request for documents at that time. So they've been updated to include a little more detail and ready for council to consider and take action. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Kelly, do we have a second?
Sir.
Thank you, Burns. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous, Janie. Thank you. Item B, consider and take action on city financial reports. These reports are included strictly for two things. One, the accusations that money is being mishandled or that there's no record-keeping have been going on for a while. It is true that we haven't been able to pull reports out of our system because we have not had a user that has been trained. She's been learning on the fly as we go. We are lucky enough to have been able to get some help with that this week. So all of the reports that are contained on the agenda in the books tonight, which are Simonton, January, February, March, and April 2024 financial reports, they are, I would call that a supplement to what's already been approved by council, but it shows current month expenses, year-to-date expenses, current year budget, budget balance remaining, percent of the balance remaining, prior year-to-date balance, and prior year fiscal year-end balance. So it's a comparison of where we are versus what's budgeted, also versus the prior year. So those are included for four months. There's a line item transaction report. And there's a financial statement from the first day of our fiscal year, which is October 1st, through, it says June. So the report date is through June 30th. It was really run on the 26th. So there will be an update to that to include the last few days of the month. The line item transaction reports, what they mean, I just made that name to try to make it understandable and as clear as possible. Those are the ones where you'll see that I've written in pen across the top. One says community outreach. Because these are categories that were specifically discussed at the meeting last week. So community outreach and what those items are. The corrections that we discussed last week have not been made, and that's why they are highlighted. They're still on the list to be made, but Julie has not been here and available to work on that just yet. So for example, the tent for the Christmas roundup is still unintentionally in community outreach. It will be moved to Keep Simonton Beautiful. There's a page for payroll, so that all of the payroll for the employees of the city is listed on one page. The total spent for this year is $20,507 as of the 26th. In this case, that all belongs to Julie because she's the only city employee, direct employee. HR is included as an option for an account name or a line item name where we could move the items from miscellaneous that are contractor-related for Nate when he was here and for Janie. So that would, it could be any line item name. A chart of accounts has some empties. HR was empty, so I selected that. It could be anything if you don't want it there. But our intention is to move everything from miscellaneous that is related over to that one, so you easily can look at it and say, this all belongs to having our contractor here. Miscellaneous is three pages long. There are some items, again, that were discussed last week that still haven't been moved out. One of them, let's say, is cleaning services for July through December. Has to be broken up and moved over into maintenance. It's unintentional that it's in this bucket. Face painting is also in there unintentionally. That belongs to Keep Simonton Beautiful. That'll be moved as soon as she's available. And a mayor and council one dinner is in the wrong category. So category corrections are on the list to be done when Julie is here. But those are also an example of any time you want to know what the total is for an account, we can run this particular report and you can see any bucket. How much have we spent? What's the date? Has the invoice numbers or the date of service vendor information on it? So the ask, if you will, is does this address what council is asking for in the report's style? Because I think that it's addressing what you're asking for, but I need you to tell me, yes, this would make us happy if we got this kind instead of what you've been receiving.
Are you referring to just the line item transaction detail that explains the moves that you're anticipating making?
No, I'm sorry. I mean, the line item ones just are so that you can see that that report type is available. I could run them for, we can run them for any category. I just ran those particular lines because we discussed in that last week's meeting and there were some questions about them. We can rerun them anytime we want to. But mainly I'm asking, so the January, February, March, April, is this what you would prefer to have instead of what you've been receiving, which is a council report? And I handed you that in the clip. If you want to look at it for reference. This is just from last week's meeting. That says the income and expense report, and then there's a check register. So both of those could be replaced by this report if that's what you would like to have.
I prefer the new report version.
Okay. Thank you.
So does the new version include the transactions that you've got here?
Yes.
Because like I was asking previously, those numbers don't match. Budget numbers, you're missing about 140, what are they saying?
So those are...
It just looks like we took it out, but it maybe wasn't applied accurately?
I don't know if I would say that it's not applied after each, since I didn't have an opportunity to look it up before this meeting. It's all there. We just have to go through and figure out if there's a discrepancy, why. Why is that? Because we know it's that one item probably. Where is it? But so, the things that you're looking at in those category reports, like the payroll report, they shouldn't say payable because that's a liability and not a council payable. But the things in miscellaneous, these are all already in your monthly. Those, these are fiscal year too. So you're looking at, if we go back to that miscellaneous report, that number is from October to now. Whereas if you're just looking at January, you're only going to see January year-to-date information there.
So is the June report that we're looking at here, because it has a lot of zeros there, is that just an example of what you're trying to provide in the future? Just so I'm clear.
Yes. So that is... Right. So that is...
I think she just...
Fiscal year-to-date. Well, it'll have zeros if we haven't spent money out of that category. Or for example, the first category is revenue. If we didn't receive revenue, revenue this month, it won't be in the current month, but it will be in the year-to-date. So for example, year-to-date says municipal court revenue is zero. Well, that's true. We haven't received any. So you've got four individual months here, and then you've also got year-to-date. So June is year-to-date. It's not the month of June. That's why your tab should say, this is financial statement as of June 30th. This is year-to-date.
It only shows we have $1,300 worth of expenditure for the whole month of June. That's what I'm asking. Is this an example that's just not been brought?
Well, what you're seeing is one bucket.
Now, it's all the way through, like current month actual is zeros. And then even on the revenue, we have a $450 revenue total just in the...
Just for this one.
Right. That's why I'm asking. So going forward, where we have January, February, March, and April, will this be a rolling tally to where it'll have that current month actual, current month budget, and then the budget variance? Like it's listed here, but it'll actually be populated, is what I'm asking.
Yes. Year-to-date is, will be, can always be a summary of the individual ones as we go. And year-to-date is what we use for budgeting as well, since we're coming up on that, which is budget versus actual. When you hear me say that, that's what that's about.
Lori, I don't, I don't think you addressed Courtney's question. You did, but I don't think she's getting it.
No, I'm getting it. Okay.
There will be zeros in the column if we didn't receive any.
No, absolutely. But this one was ran the 26th. So it's just that June is not up to date. It's nothing. It's just, that's why I was saying, is this the example, the new example? Because we didn't receive this before. This is a total new, total new layout, if you will, of what we were not seeing previously. So this definitely makes sense as long as it will be updated in that monthly area. Because we're talking about January, February, March, all that good stuff. And we're also talking about moving a bunch of line items. So I just want to make sure we move them accurately into the proper categories to the 20th, so that we don't catch ourselves in a situation where we've spent, like keeping Simonton beautiful, I think only has $6,000. And they have a $3,000 alone expenditure on that tent. So I just, that's the reason for my question. So I got it? Yeah. Just making sure. But these details, these transactions are also within these, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you like this style of report, then we will transition to this. And we'll just call this your finance book. Everybody has one of their own. And we can add them on each month when we have our meeting.
Why can't we have the line items in this?
You can. I'm asking what you want. We've figured out how. Well, I'd rather not make it 12 reports because we've got one part-time person at the moment. But if it's two, we can manage that. Because everything you've received previously comes from here. Like this has already existed. It's just a matter of how to get it out of the system and present it in the way we'd like to use it.
I'd like to see the details in this one. And if we could have it current like this, that'd be great. Instead of January's.
That was only because we kept tabling once.
Two months. So. Could we be current on it?
So we're current now. So in July, you will receive May.
So I have a question. And if you want me to present this to everybody, I made a copy for everybody, including you.
Why don't you tell me what it is first?
It's actually a profit and loss budget versus actual from the city of Weston Lakes. That is 100% due. It's through the month of June. And they've run this monthly. I have actually more than what I've made here. I have April, May, and June, but this was just the most current because they break it out from October the 23rd all the way to June of '24. And it's broken out very, very specifically. What's in the revenues, what's, I mean mileage for secretary, I mean you can see it all through the details. It's a mere five-page report to keep yourself or whomever may be doing that job from printing Lord knows where binders of files. And this was literally pulled in, I think, about 15 minutes. So it's...
They're not using fund accounting, to my knowledge, but we'll find out. We can find out what their software is. I think it's using QuickBooks.
They use QuickBooks. But this was, I mean, this is very specific. All the categories matched what they were, like under their budgeted categories. And that's, I think, where the confusion comes. Because every time we get a new one of these or a new layout, that's where the questions come in. So we're just trying to make sure we're putting it in the right buckets so that we don't inaccurately amend any budgets that would need to be amended. Does that make sense?
Right.
Okay. So I don't know if y'all want to see this. It's very, very specific.
How about if you just let me have one? I will have her, have our finance folks compare that and see if we can just pull what we already have. Because I know there is a possibility, there's an ability to run this same report, but with detail. So you don't have two reports, you can just get one report, but it has a detail page for each one.
Don't let me see this, Justin, so you know what I'm talking about?
How about if we just hang on to it?
Burns would like to see it. It's pretty specific.
Okay.
And it's just for that month. But I have the other ones, just to be accurate.
Thank you. And the mayor of Weston Lakes is super open to sharing. So we'll, I was here with him to see if he's, see if we can pull something similar to that. I think that already is something that we're able to do.
I said, could we have this report to the, you know, to the month? Like this one to the end of June? And you said yes. And you said the next meeting you can have until the end of, you'll have April's report.
Yeah. So you've already proved through April. We're always running a month and a year so that everything can settle, like last of payments, last of everything can come in and settle and be sure that we're giving you the accurate year-end report. I mean, month-end report, excuse me.
But you're still saying in July, we're getting two months of month-end.
Right. Yes. So let's say in July, if I gave you June, everything isn't settled yet. So we're going to... Well, I'm so happy for Weston Lakes. They can do that. When we have full staff personnel, we might be able to run something closer. When we are fully staffed, that might be able to change. Right now, there's just no way. I'd be overcommitting if I said we can do that right now. So we'll continue our practice that we have had for five or six years. But when you look at the, sorry, y'all, just one minute. When you look at the year-to-date, that, the one that says through June 30th, you can see everything that's been entered, even if we haven't presented you April yet. So, I mean, May yet. So when I give you the month of May and ask you to approve May, it will be sure that everything is settled. There's, we're not expecting anything else for May. It's all been audited and all the downloads of the credit card bills and all the things that we do happen. And so we're presenting that month as, having been audited, we're sending, giving it to you for approval. But when you look at the month or the year-to-date, I keep saying the wrong thing and I'm so sorry for the confusion. The year-to-date will include everything that's been entered in Fund View. So you have the most up-to-date information, even though the month may still be in an audit. Internal audit, I should say. And when we're standing, it'd be wonderful if we can be, move that forward by 30 days. I guess I'm agreeing with you that that's a goal. We're just not prepared to do it today.
Well, since you want to know what we want to know.
Yes, absolutely. Gentlemen, I didn't mean to monopolize all of the conversation. How are you feeling about the go-back-to-this style that we use for budgeting? Does that give you what you're looking for, year-to-date?
I like your financial statements that you've got here with the current and year-to-date and the budget comparison. And along with that, if you have the transaction report, you know, like say the month of June, you said you have the transactions for June. I mean, the whole year. In other words, each month you get...
Yeah, we'll continue to give you the...
Yeah. And then the financial statement, it shows comparisons.
Okay, great. So we're agreed. We'll change over to this report style for the monthly. We'll continue to change out your year-to-date as the months go by, so you're looking at the most recent one. And we'll include the individual item register.
Yeah.
Sir?
The individual transactions.
Okay. Okay. Got it. You got it?
I just have one question. I just want to be sure. Because what I'm hearing is that, is that they like this style, the new style, right? Updated. And when you're talking about the monthly transactions, are they talking about like the payments and everything that you get now? The regular financial, this came in and this went out? I mean, y'all call them something different.
I think that we're talking about the...
The what?
Not that one. The electric bill and the AT&amp;T bill.
Okay. Like these?
Yes.
And I have one question, just so that, please don't get irritated at me, council, but just want to be sure to be clear so that later on we don't, aren't lacking something that you thought, that you communicated to one of... So are they also going to want to hit the payroll? Because that's separate, as you pointed out.
I think payroll could be included with, in the months and the year-to-date. Okay. As opposed to pulling that separately. Okay. Unless there's a reason that we need a report of some kind. Council co is letting me know that and we'll include it for that month. Okay? Thank you. Thank you very much. There's no action to be taken other than thank you for the consensus on the reports. We can put to bed all of everybody's concerns by using that. Item C, consider and take action affirming adherence to Resolution 2023-01, conduct of meeting for council and public comments. I'm bringing this just back to the top of our inbox. It's probably called that when it's, when we're in the email world so that we all can remember that we've agreed, our code of conduct says that we'll follow some rules of order, mainly about council members not monopolizing the meeting. Everyone gets a chance to speak. I will be better about trying to call out each council member so that everyone has an opportunity to speak on an item before somebody has another chance at a same or similar item so that it doesn't become one-sided. Respect for each other and for the public. Our code also includes some directives for public comments. Public's doing much better though, being a little less fiery and maybe using some language and being so direct about something that weren't quite so respectful. Councilings are due the same. That would be some great behavior moving forward. Unless there are questions, we're going to leave it at that. Okay. Item five is executive session. Unless I have forgotten something we need to discuss, I don't have any items for executive session today. So that'll move us down to item eight, which is reports. Thank you, Burns, for coming in and giving me your priorities for budget. Council members, I just need to schedule time with you at your convenience to get on the same page about what you make sure that we're going to include for our priorities during budgeting. The project here at City Hall is moving forward well. The plumbers are still hard at work, but I think they might be through with the rock hammer. So we're real happy about that inside the office. We are having ongoing trouble with AT&amp;T getting out here in a timely fashion to move our fiber connection. We're still working on that, but it is already pushing back the construction of the new foundation by three weeks. So we're, keep you posted. We've made some, had some discussions with the contractor and with our engineering team, making sure that we all keep a very close eye on scheduling with the election in November as the focus. So what condition this room will be in. We do not want to cancel city of Simonton being a polling location that day if we don't have to. It's a little far out at this moment to know what will be happening in council's chambers. But, so we'll keep you posted as that develops. So far, the city is still signed up as to be a polling location on voting day, not early voting, which would be our normal practice. And that's it for reports for me. Can you have anything?
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to send an email to the council and to Mr. Mitch Jenkins, who's a former candidate, of the reminder that your TEC reports are due. If you have them, only you know, right? If you have them, they're called the July Semiannual. And it's just a form of reporting that the Texas Ethics Commission requires that you comply with. But I'll send you the information, the schedule, the information that you can make a determination if you're not sure. If you will call the attorneys, they love speaking to people. And they are quick. They'll run the traps very quickly and they can tell you in a couple of minutes whether you should report or not, or if you have anything to do. Okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes. That's all.
Phil, did you have anything? Okay, great. Council, anyone have a report? Counsel, anyone have a report? All right, thank you very much. We will call that adjourned at 7:04. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Thank you. All right, that is for all of us.